The contractors are, along with an excavation.
Correct.
There could have been two uses.
Right, obvious, yes. And most of them are.
It could have been.
Yeah, I mean, most guys that have equipment end up parking into the pit or, I mean, that's what we've done for years.
Yeah, you bring the stones in and you.
Right, leave the trucks at night. Equipment in, equipment out. So it's dual use in that sense, yeah. Unless it's, you know, massive hole in the ground going down the side of the hill.
Within reason.
So again, I mean, that's a, that's a local.
It's a lo-.
Local thing, okay. So like I said, I would suggest that you start figuring out on your end as to what it is that you, what your future plans is on the property and try and get something together as to what is there now, so that.
Well, I just think it's a, it's a interesting dilemma that you throw out there. If I, if I go spend my fifty thousand dollars and get my permit, then I can sell my pit to Boston Sand Gravel and then the town will deal with their attorneys from Dallas. And they won't be able to deal with the local person, if you will. So I, so I think that's a slippery slope that can happen. I'm not gonna live forever. I didn't, didn't wanna spend fifty thousand dollars at this stage in my life anyhow, but on that, because, like I said, there's not, there's not much call for material around here. I do think it's a very good idea to use local material versus trucking it for twenty-five or thirty miles, because everybody talks about the damage we do to the ozone there. And if you're gonna truck it twenty-five or thirty miles versus five, there's a big difference there. So I, so I don't think it's beneficial to hinder people from using the lo-. Cause every local little pit has their whole nucleus of people that use it that generates a little economy within itself. And I just think that, that the cost prohibitive of this setup is not gonna be good for the town.
Not having these pits will drive up the cost of construction everywhere. It has to come from somewhere and it's gonna be.
Right, right. And you can send your money to Boston Sand Gravel or you can send it to Fred Sargent, you know, I mean, that's. No, I'm, I'm serious, I'm serious. And the towns, like I say, I, I think the town's already dead in that regard. We got no, no place to buy gas. We got no, no convenience store that doesn't have five-time hours. We got, I mean, it's, we got a McMansion on the lake and, and that's what it is.
Yeah, you know, the other thing, you know.
Back to thousands leaving, you know what I mean, of gone already, you know, I mean, those types of things, the technicoils gone.
There used to be a lot in this town.
Yeah, I know, I'm telling you. We over-regulate it and it drives, drives it all away.
The, the other aspect to that too is no one wants a gravel pit in their backyard, okay? And those that are existing are existing. It's not like having to go, you know, through the permitting and stuff like that. So it, it may make them even more valuable because of the, you know, objection to having pits. And like you said, materials becoming more scarce. So who knows what it's gonna be like in another ten or fifteen or twenty years, you know? I don't have a crystal ball, okay?
Yeah, well, we don't either. And that's why I say, I didn't take much out of my pit last year because I was hauling off of my storage facility.
Yep.
You know, so I'm, I mean, I did haul some, so I guess I.
You always wanna take a little bit.
Continue with, but it's kinda like, you know, that's, it kinda like beating your head against the wall.
It depends on what the economy's doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Economy's good, then we do good. If it's not, then we can not haul much out.
For, just as an aside, for anybody that is interested, Jedry's Pit down on Twenty-Eight, he just went back through the whole process with DES the last two or three years. So if, I mean, you might wanna talk to him or his son and they can give you a very good idea, cause that's pretty good scale operation on what his cost was to, to, for the alteration of terrain and the rest of it.
I got a whole packet from White Mountain Survey. They're the ones that did Stockman's down there.
But not only Stockman, but Jedry's too, cause Jedry went through the process.
Oh, I got a whole packet from him and that's where I came up with my numbers. Whole packet from him. He wrote me up a proposal and he's waiting for me to give him a deposit. I just, I just don't know if I.
So your package is about fifty grand?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be fifty grand, yeah.
For how many, how many acres?
I have a twenty-five acre piece of property.
Twenty-five acres.
And you may never get a return on it.
Never, never, never get a return.
But DES may show offense, just for.
Then that's fine, you know, I, whatever, you know, I, I mean, I don't live on that site, so I guess I could just walk away and stop paying taxes and let the town repossess it and then, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. I'm just. My near- the nearest houses, well, there's one house that's probably a thousand feet away and then, you know, and then, I mean, you've been there. The next, I mean, four thousand feet to the, to the road. So it's not like.
So what, with the report of ex- ex- excavation as far as material, I guess I've probably always been filling this out wrong when it asked for total area. I thought it was total area that could be, you know, as far as property-wise, but it's actually the total area that's open. So if I put seventeen acres down on that, which is the total area that could be touched, because the rest is in current use or whatever around it, then that's wrong. It's only what is currently open.
You're talking about the report of excavating material?
Yes.
Because the intent, when you file the intent, which is your first document.
Report.
Basically, that information is for the town, okay? And it says the amount of, you know, area that's permitted. And then it asks you for the permit number. So you'd have, it asks you for the total number of acres in the parcel. So if it's a hundred acres and it's asked for the total number of permitted acres, and that's another number. Then it asks for the permit per R, say, one fifty-five E or the report. So that report date is not the excavation report. It's the one between August fourth of eighty-nine and the one to nineteen ninety-one. It's that golden ticket date. Then it asks for the amount of area that's currently open, that's being excavated, the amount that's been reclaimed. And basically, the report is now asking you, so as of April one of two thousand and seventeen, you said that you had ten acres open. As of April one, or April, March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen, which is the end of the tax year, if you expanded, you'd say that I now have eleven acres open. So it's just a matter of keeping track as to what got reclaimed, if the pit has grown or shrunk.
Right.
So if you're only permitted for eleven acres or you're only anticipating excavating.
None of us, none of us are permitted.
Well, I know, I'm just saying.
So, so I always, I never put anything on that permitted line.
See, I've always put seventeen acres.
See, now you're liable for alteration of terrain for seventeen acres.
But it's, there's not seventeen acres open. It'll be lucky if it's a, even an acre.
Yeah, I mean, DES will not, I mean, just because you think you're gonna do it, if you are actually gonna get out there and do it and it's contiguous and you're going to go into it, I mean, you've only got one acre open. If you're planning on expanding, then you're gonna need an alteration of terrain permit, whether you wait till you reach that magic two-point-three acres and you go over that or you get it done now.
Is there something with DES that it's contiguous excavation over a five-year period or does that, is that not true? I thought, I thought, in other words, if you, if you excavated it under a hundred thousand and it was more than five years, maybe it's the wrong permit. I've done so many permits over the years that.
They have recently done some changes.
Yeah.
Their, their regulations went from probably about, I don't know, thirty pages to what, ninety, something? So, you know, the questions pertaining to their requirements, you know, in continuous area, there'd be a question for, you know, White Mountain Survey should be able to answer those questions also as far as what, what those.
There was something with five years that I, I forget whether it was five years, if it's, I just forget. But I know there was some limitation on the two-point, on the hundred thousand square feet over a period of time, but it easily could have changed recently. And I, and I haven't checked in the last twelve or sixteen, eighteen months.
They, they're always changing as far as the administrative rules and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, fully aware of that.
I mean, I've tried enough times to keep track of my own.
Is there a minimum amount that you can, or maximum amount you can take without having any permits at all? Like two hundred yards, a thousand yards a year off of a piece of property?
That's what the town has done here, okay? So under one fifty-five E, if you look at the beginning of.
No, I'm talking about a different piece of property I own that doesn't have a pit on it.
No, no.
Okay, yeah?
One fifty-five E is the local regulation of all excavation within the town, whatever you do, okay? And it says at the beginning, one fifty-five E two, it states, "No owner shall permit any excavation of earth on the premises without first obtaining a permit therefore." So what does that say? No excavation. One fifty-five E does not define commercial, does not define incidental, does not define minor topographical adjustment, does not define normal landscaping, okay? So it's up to the regulator to determine whether or not what you're doing is commercial or not. There are exceptions. They are not exemptions, but there are exceptions under one fifty-five E two A for excavation which is incidental to the alteration, okay, exclusively incidental to the construction or alteration of a building structure or way on a portion of the premises where the removal will occur. So the thousand cubic yards that was mentioned, they tied it into the excavation tax. Excavation tax is that if you are excavating and you are going to either stockpile or remove more than a thousand cubic yards, it's taxable. If not, if it's a thousand cubic yards or less, you don't have to file the intent. So the town, what the town has said is if you have an incidental project where you're doing a house site or a driveway or something, they have defined incidental, they've defined commercial, they've defined agricultural excavation, normal landscaping. And they've used that thousand cubic yards and said, hey, if you're doing a construction project and you have all your permits in place for the, for the septic and the building and the driveway permit, go for it. You can take a thousand off. But you go over that, you may have to come before them, okay, for an exception. And you definitely need the notice of intent to excavate. So the question is not, not who needs a permit, but who does not need a permit, okay?
Again, from an, from an, and I'm just picking because he did it a few years ago, Spiderweb Gardens down the road. They knocked the top off a hill that was multiple thousands of yards, pushed it over to the right, put it back down and made a level area out of it. Would that constitute an excavation if it's more than a thousand? I mean, would that constitute a taxable excavation?
Can leave site.
When we're, when we're dealing with the excavation tax, there's, there are exemptions. And one of those exemptions is excavation on the parcel land that is used in the alteration or reconstruction of the property within the same tax year. So if they take it from here and bring it over here and it's all used on-site, then it's not taxable.
Would the same thing be true on a, on a subdivision if you take, if you had to excavate to put a road in and you regraded the property with the balance of it and it's all on the same property? Is that an exemption?
From the excavation tax.
It is, okay, because it's used on the.
It's used on-site.
Right. For instance, the subdivision I did, we put in two miles of underground. We excavated sand on-site to use in the trenches for the, to when we were laying conduit, all on the same project. It happened to be less than a hundred thousand contiguous, so there wasn't an alteration of terrain permit for the roads that were built. And we weren't liable for any gravel tax because again, it was just.
It stayed on-site.
Stayed on, okay.
Yep. The, the kicker on the excavation tax is, let's say you excavated it, tax year is April one to March thirty-first. You excavated it and then the snow came and you had all the excess loan piled up and you had, you know, more than a thousand cubic yards. If that sat there all year and by March thirty-first, by April one of two thousand and eighteen, it wasn't used, that becomes taxable.
Oh, okay.
It's only taxed once and it's two cents a yard.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah.
So it has to be used within the same tax year in which it's, it's excavated.
You dictate at least raise the tax to make it worthwhile. Just saying.
You're getting the two, two cents worth.
Yeah. So I, down here at my storage buildings, you were the one that came up with the number ten thousand yards. I moved ten thousand yards last year and it didn't, it didn't all disappear. So do I pay for the ten thousand yards?
You do. It's not a sales tax.
On my, on my report, I put ten thousand yards.
Whatever you.
For this year.
What have you excavated between August, January, April one of two thousand and seventeen?
Yeah.
And March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen?
Right.
What have you excavated on that site, okay? And it was either stockpiled and stayed on-site or left the site. That's taxable. That's your report come out.
So.
You pay the tax once.
Yep. So I won't have to file that report next year if I did that full ten thousand yards this year on my report, because I moved it and half of it's still in the stockpile and half of it's gone.
So.
So I'll do that. I didn't survey it to see the pile. I just, you were the one that drove by one day and told Jack that that was a ten thousand yard pile.
I have, I have your plans. I haven't calculated it out yet, so I'm hoping that you are, it was more than a couple thousand. You'll have to file.
No, 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 and I'm not disagreeing with your ten thousand yards. I'm just saying that I didn't measure it before I started. I know what I sold last year.
Yeah.
But I still have a pile left there that I didn't sell. But I paid the tax on it right now.
You pay the tax on what left, you pay the tax on what's filed, including the loan. So you'll have to do a supplemental intent.
I, okay.
Because your original intent was low.
Was two thousand yards and then I get another supplemental for another two, cause I thought it was only for what was leaving the site.
Oh, yeah, no, it's.
So I'll do another supplemental.
Yep, and then your report.
And then I'll do my report and then I won't have to do one next year.
As long as you're not excavating from natural earth.
You can take what's stockpiled.
You can take what's stockpiled.
I can take my ten thousand. I'm gonna use the ten thousand yard deal, cause I didn't, I didn't survey it or anything and now it's kinda like this.
I can, I can take a look at your plans and see whether or not that estimate is, is close.
But then I wouldn't have to file for next year.
We're, we're in next year.
Well, right, but I mean, I wouldn't have to file an intent this year.
Correct.
So I'm all done. So I'll speak if we can get the volumes correct.
Yep.
Leah, you had a question?
Is everyone else? I don't wanna. Okay, so several questions, but I need to confirm a couple things before I ask the questions. So I'm not gonna speak right now to the AOT. I'm actually speaking to the eighty-nine to ninety-one time period that you referenced. So what I heard was that even though the regulator, which was us, the planning board, did not notify the excavation operators, it was still the responsibility of the property owners of the pits to do something, correct?
That's correct, that's.
However, then the next thing that I heard, and I wanna confirm that I heard this correctly, however, by the town issuing the intent to excavate, continuing to allow them to excavate, we essentially grandfathered them.
You did nothing to stop them.
So are they grandfathered right now, these six?
Only for those areas that.
At the time of ninety-one, right? Between eighty-nine and ninety-one?
No, what, what you have right now.
Right now, today.
Whatever's open right now.
Whatever's open today.
Grandfathered as of right now.
Okay, so it's not, okay, so that's one question, cause I was gonna ask, what does the grandfathering entail? Is it from back then or is it now?
Okay. The, if they were truly grandfathered under one fifty-five E, it would have been what they had written on their report.
Correct, but we don't have that.
You don't have that. And so now, all of a sudden, within the past year or so, you've said, oh, we haven't been doing what we should have been doing. So it's what's open like now.
Today, okay.
And how much open? Loan scraped off, ready to dig, but they're still digging here? You know, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, if, if the overburden's been taken off and it's ready to go into, then.
What if there's really no overburden and it's just totally what they're removing? You know what I mean? If there was, say it was treed.
Yep.
And they cut the trees and stumped it. And what they're selling is everything. Not just taking a foot of lawn off, now it's sanded, it's a sand pit, but they're selling, they're just digging it and selling the whole thing. Is that open because it was stumped?
No.
Okay.
If they, if they don't touch it, it runs bad.
Right.
So no.
Well, any hill broke that.
Right, right. What I'm saying, it's, the excavation has not gone into that area.
Okay.
That is not, you know, and to go out and chop down all the trees and, you know, we do have aerial photography that will give us a, footprint as to what was there.
Right.
Cause if you're giving them, what, fourteen and fifteen, okay, is what you said, if you filed the intents.
Yeah, I think if they did fourteen and fifteen.
Two years prior.
So two years, so you could use that as your benchmark, whatever's.
Not on those intent to excavate?
Well.
What's on the pictures?
Aerials.
Oh, oh, Google Maps. You mean, I mean, Google Earth.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have that. So I can go onto each tax map and get the amount.
You can scale it off.
Okay.
Yep.
So we can do that and then use that. So then, that, so my next question is, they have until, the operator, the operators, owners have until April of the next year?
Look at you. Town meeting of next year.
April, yeah, March fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to get approval for site plan review.
No, they don't need site plan review. They've skipped that.
The deadline for site plan review application is it, whatever. That's what we asked for.
Right, but the ones that had excavated, we were skipping the site plan review. That was the reason for the grandfathering in the prior two years.
If you're gonna expand, excuse me, if you're gonna expand.
To expand, they have to do that. To stay where the bounties that there are, they skip the site plan review.
So then what, I guess my question is, as a board, so that we don't make any more, you know, moving forward, what does this board need to do in order to help facilitate them to get permitted?
Establish what is.
The amount is of the open area?
The open area that's, that's existing. It's gonna be on them to determine whether or not they are going to be expanding. And if they are, then they have to go through the permit process.
But if they choose not to expand, are they still allowed to operate after next March fourteenth? If they do not expand and only continue to use the existing open area?
They'd have to stay within the existing open area, nothing beyond that. So.
So then this letter that we sent them, if they choose not to expand, they do not need to act on this, correct? This is what I'm trying to.
That's what she just said.
I just wanna make sure, cause they're.
In the area that's open, no expansion.
Correct, no expansion.
Bankrupt.
Correct, thank you.
And then in theory, uses that have been operating that are outside of the excavation of sand on the property would be a current non-conforming use, which means they could continue because they would be grandfathered. So if they were bringing loan or, you know, processing it on-site, and that's a different use than the excavation of sand, that's been in constant operation, you know, for whatever period of time, that would be allowed. But wouldn't in theory too, like, for instance, most sand pits accept stumps and brush and stuff like that.
Right.
That's a separate use from the excavation of sand if it's been a continuous operation.
Do you need a permit to have stumps brought in? I'm, I don't, I'm, don't know.
It's DES.
It's a good thing we don't do that.
One, one question to you aside, if it, if you're excavating less than a thousand yards a year, you'd still be exempt on the expansion, cause you're still under a thousand yards a year.
Right, but you're moving it so that it's, you're moving it from the property. It's not incidental to a use, so it's a commercial use of the dirt.
Right. Less than a thousand yards a year.
Yeah, thousand yards, thousand yards a year is a taxable thing. Taking dirt from one place and moving it to another.
Right, cause when we wrote that ordinance last year, we exempted less than a thousand yards.
Yes, I believe.
Right.
Now I remember.
Right. But less than a thousand yards of excavation is, is exempt from the ordinance and from taxation. That's the way.
Well.
I was sitting here, I helped write that.
Under, under seventy-two B, which is the excavation tax, if you were in excavation, whether you're grandfathered or permitted, you have to file the intent to excavate.
Well, no, no, the intent to excavate was.
Whether you take out one yard or if you take out a million. If it's an incidental excavation, a one-shot deal.
Right.
It's less than a thousand cubic yards, no intent. But if you are a gravel pit, you have to file that intent every year.
We're doing that. My point was.
You have to file it.
Right, file it. But at the town level, you're exempt from expansion and the rest of it, cause it's less than a thousand yards a year. So in other words, if I, I bring in a couple hundred yards doing a house here or there, coming and going, and I probably bring in as much as I bring out, but I, you know, there's some coming out, but not much, but it's less than a thousand a year. That's why I just bring up the exemption.
One thing you'd wanna be specific is that, you know, this extracurricular activity as far as bringing stuff in and processing, that that doesn't expand the footprint.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's in a bowl, yeah, it's.
So do you pay, do you pay a two percent, a two cent tax on the stuff you bring in and then you screen it and you haul it back out? You pay.
The, the two cents per yard is due if you take off more than a thousand cubic yards from that construction site. It should be paid on that site where it originates from. So if you're doing a project.
Right, and I take six loads of topsoil back to my pit and I screen it and I bring four of them back to the job site, am I paying tax on those four?
Is it a thousand cubic yards?
No.
No. If you are. If you have a project that you're working on and you are removing more than a thousand cubic yards or stockpiling more on-site, then that's taxable on that property from where it came from.
Right.
The fact that you take off four hundred yards and you take it back to your site, that's not taxable.
Okay.
Okay. So if you had a subdivision of twenty lots, separate parcels, you could take off nine hundred yards per parcel and you wouldn't be paying any tax on that. And it would be exempt from your local regulation.
It's not the tax, it's the paperwork side. It's the, I mean, if you could go online and just say, here's your twenty bucks, you know, here's a picture of the lot. You'd help a lot easier than, like everything else they set up.
Oh, stump management.
You know, you guys could make a lot, a lot more money by lessening the regulations and charging more on the sand.
When you say you guys.
She works her tax.
You know, I don't make the law. I just have the pleasure of administering.
You can make a ten cents. You can make a ten cents a yard and say, have fun and everyone will be happy.
Yeah, but then all would happen would be it'd get passed on to the taxpayers and the consumer and the town when you buy in what you're saying. So stump management, when stumps generated from clearing land buried on the same land, state law exempts that activity, okay? Provided that the burial site is at least seventy-five feet from any drinking water supply or, and local approval is obtained. Off-site, stumps, tree parts, off-site locations, not in the same site generation, do not require a permit, provided that burial site seventy-five feet from any water supply well, twenty-five feet from any property line, and at least four feet above the seasonal line water table. All those stumps and tree parts that are buried are buried in a manner to preclude development of sinkholes and erosion cover materials, duh, 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 duh. And a notation must be reported on the chain of title for the property in which the burial site is located. So in other words, it's gonna be within UD as to where that burial site is. So there are state regulations.
So if I heard that correctly, if that, it didn't sound like there was a permit required by DES?
Yeah.
So if that's been, something that's been happening on a, in a pit, no longer a pit, continuously for fifty years and then in theory it's a current non-conforming use.
I think the key word is buried.
Right.
It is buried, yeah.
Cause most, most of my piles, you could, you could call it a compost pile. Mine's not buried.
Most of them get turned.
Mine's a.
The issue honestly is when they, when stumps decompose underground, you can get, I mean, we, we lost a kid in a place we were working one time that we did, nobody had reported a stuffed up.
Right.
And the kid walked off and down the hole.
If there's no permit required for typical stumps in the area.
You could pile them. You could pile them up.
Right, and it's been happening in somebody's sand pit somewhere.
Right.
Then, and it's a separate use than the excavation of sand, and there's nothing saying that it's not a current non-conforming use and they can't continue to do that. Is that, am I hearing that right?
Yeah.
It's a burial where they get, you know, concerned, so...
A lot, a lot of those just go into bark bowls anyway, there's actually money in that. If Tom Hawkins down in Farmington recycles untold yards of...
They're the dirt doctors and con...
Exactly, yeah.
They make good money if you truck it down to them, they'll take it.
On our fourteen fifteen intent grandfathering is for the use of a pit on a property. The grandfathering, as of right now, is what they have opened. So the grandfathering that we're dealing, grandfathering that we're dealing with in the fourteen fifteen year is the use of the property, but if they expand beyond that use, then they need the permit. Does that make sense?
I understand, that makes sense.
And we'll get that operational area off of those.
Correct, so if people have a plan of what's open right now, that's grandfathered. If you expand out of what's open right now, you're grandfathered for the use of excavation, but not grandfathered for the permit to expand.
Just digging down within that permit...
You can only go, you can only go so far along the table.
Yeah, well, that's it. You're digging into an embankment, then...
You're expanding the area.
The embankment's falling and receding, so...
So if you're not in this open area going down, and it's later, you're expanding.
Stay within your open area.
Exactly. So you're grandfathered to skip the ZBA for the special exception, but not grandfathered from the planning board to expand the pit. So in other words, you don't have to go to the ZBA to, to start from scratch. You're not starting a new pit, getting permission to dig. You already have permission to dig, you need permission to expand.
Okay, so I was already...
So if I don't expand, I don't need to come before the board, is what you're saying?
Exactly. You can bring in a plan of what you have open, we can probably match it to Google Earth, let's say, we'll do a comparison, yeah, this one's fine.
In a site, is it?
In a site, is it correct? Does that make sense to you? Okay, does that make sense?
So, can we talk about reclamation for a moment, just so that both board and the property owners know what to do when the time comes? And I, the Witten Trust will be a example, we permitted that, and we, and we actually got a reclamation plan at the time we approved the site plan. So my question is, if these are all grandfathered, when does the reclamation process kick in for them, and what is our responsibility?
Reclamation would be under the one fifty-five E five, and basically, it is, they have to be reclaimed within one year from when the excavation ceases operation, okay?
But when does the plan have to be...